All right, welcome, everyone. I call the January 17, 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order. The main purposes of tonight's meeting are nomination and election of a vice chair and a study session on the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan update, the guiding principles, and 2024 schedule. Before we move on to agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our hybrid meeting format. The City of Bothell is providing the option to attend this meeting either in person or remotely via Zoom. For those participating via Zoom, the chat and question functions are not available for use to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. We have a public comment agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. This time is for comments not on tonight's agenda. Please limit these comments to three minutes. Please note that the City of Bothell does not tolerate verbal harassment. Please remember this during your comments. Public comment and hearing testimony will be allowed both in person and via Zoom. Those wishing to comment via Zoom were asked to submit an online form by 3:00 p.m. today. People wishing to submit written comments were also asked to submit those comments by 3:00 p.m., and I don't believe we received either today. No, okay, all right. Email was encouraged as well, will be acknowledged, and hasn't been received, so. Those in attendance may also make comments and have been asked to indicate their desire to comment on sign-up sheets. The Imagine Bothell notice, City website, and tonight's agenda all provided information to the public for providing comments. Video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers, during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they're referencing so that everyone can follow along. At this point, I'd like to acknowledge the attendance of the commissioners. Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Westerbeck is absent and excused. Commissioner Robson.
Present.
Commissioner Anders.
Here.
And Commissioner Gustafson. And we also, in addition, have Director Greenspan participating virtually, and Senior Planner Kirsten Mant, and also Raed Turani, Transportation Supervisor, and Sarah Frost manning the computer there. And with that, before I begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you're also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off, as there is a delay. At specific breaks in the presentation, I'll be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate this by raising your hand, either in person or virtually. Identify yourself, and before you ask a question or make a motion, second a motion, or participate in debate, please mute your microphone when not speaking. So the first item on our agenda is public comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak, and as I indicated, we have not had anyone take advantage of that. Those speaking will have three minutes. Written comments were forwarded, and again, we did not receive those. This time is for comments not on tonight's agenda. Do we have any Zoom commenters?
We do have Amy from Puget Sound Energy in the audience. I don't know, Amy, if you wanted to speak tonight? Sounds like we are good.
All right, there apparently are no, is no one in the Zoom room that wishes to comment, so we will end the public comment period, move on to our next agenda item, which is approval of the December 6 minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Do I have anyone who wants to move to?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, it has been moved to approve the December 6 minutes. Is there a second?
Sarah Gustafson, I will second that, thank you.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the December 6 meeting. Is there any comment on those minutes? Looking to our Zoom participants and in person. Seeing none, then we can move. All in favor of approving the December 6 minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All right, approval of the December 6 minutes is unanimous. We do have an item of new business. It would be the nomination of the commission vice chair. The vice chair position is vacant, as the previous occupant is now a city council member. Congratulations to him. We've also got an absence that I think would be interested in participating in this discussion, so I'd entertain a motion to either nominate or defer. Is there a? Commissioner Anders.
I move to defer until Commissioner Westerbeck is back.
Okay, it's been moved.
Seconded, seconded, Commissioner Jones.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we defer this item to our next meeting, which would be February 7.
Yes.
All in favor of deferring this item to our next agenda meeting?
Aye.
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 All right, it is unanimous. We will defer that item to the next meeting and hopefully choose a vice chair by then. So with that, we move on to our study session, the Imagine Bothell 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, and Senior Planner Mant will lead us through the guiding principles and the 2024 schedule.
Thank you, Chair Kieran. And I do want to point out, it is 2024, not January 17, 2023. It's one of those things, the first thing of the year. You always forget to change the year, so. Oh, why you're not forwarding? There we go. So upcoming engagement opportunities, not a ton coming up right now. We do have Civic Saturdays this Saturday. It's going to be on civic infrastructure, so Sarah and I will be there, again, mostly just to provide a quick update on where we are with the comp plan and just to be there to answer questions and just be a face. We are now looking at our open house being sometime probably in early May of 2024. We will have more information on that as the details of that are coming together. We wanted to make sure that this open house coincided with the public comment period for the EIS, so that's why the timing got pushed back a little bit. And then we always have ongoing engagement opportunities on Engage Bothell. We do have a survey, don't know that it's live yet, but we're working on a survey for the current country village sub-area that we're working on doing a big update for. Part of that is going to be picking the name and then also just gathering information from ideally folks that live there, work there, spend a lot of time in that corridor, so. Middle of next month is what Sarah Frost has said, so keep an eye on that on Engage Bothell. And then upcoming meetings, obviously, tonight we are meeting, we will be bringing the same topic to City Council on February 6, and then the Transportation Element team will be coming back to this body on February 7, and then City Council on March 5. So more to come on that space. And then a quick overview of tonight's meeting, we don't have a ton of topics for tonight, but wanted to open the year up with a revision to the guiding principles. I'm going to talk a little bit about what we've, just reminding everyone what we've talked about so far. We'll introduce the second draft, and that will include the two versions we have with the more visual component. We've been working with a graphic designer on that, which has been really exciting. And then take some time looking at the proposed schedule for the year. This is the same schedule that I showed at the December meeting, but just spending a little more time kind of looking at it and making sure everyone feels comfortable with that. So no really specific action, we're mostly getting feedback on the proposed schedule. Any additional feedback you have on the guiding principles? The second draft takes into account feedback we heard from the first draft, as well as feedback from the public and our working group, and then also feedback and preferences on the graphics we've been working on to make that document a little more visually pleasing. So in terms of what we talked about in 2023, so we did come first to talk to you about the existing guiding principles that is now currently our vision in the 2015 plan, some of the best practices we identified, and some of the things we were hoping to achieve, one being make it more colorful, more sort of graphically pleasing and eye-catching. We wanted to condense the length while still retaining the intent and sort of the core of that messaging, updating for language, for modernizing language, and also just to be a better reflection of who we are now, now since it's been so long since we did a major update to the vision. And then increasing an emphasis on climate slash the environment and equity were two really big pieces of that. In the first draft, we came from more additional feedback. There was consensus that the graphic concept or being more graphic was preferable. In general, everyone liked the shorter principles, and particularly if that can be paired with more robust graphics, potentially further refinement, so we worked on that as well. We did get some feedback that in the process of refining some of these, maybe some of the more kind of evocative language was lost, so we tried to incorporate more of that back and make it a little bit more colorful and in keeping in the intent of what a visioning document is. We had a lot of questions around the use of the term balance, which was an interesting surprise, and we were really happy to get that consistent feedback, both from councilors. We had some feedback, a pretty robust discussion with our working group around that term as well, so we kind of went back to the brainstorming board about that. And then we also heard a lot about emphasizing the value of ensuring the future, again, from multiple groups that we spoke with, so that was another theme we wanted to make sure was integrated back in. So this is our, I'm calling it our Q1 version of the 2024 draft guiding principles. I'm hoping that with the revisions from this version, that will get implemented into the drafts that go out to the public in April as part of the full plan, that we can kind of see it all together. And we are also working on thinking through ways to tie the elements in with the guiding principles more directly, which isn't super clear in the current plan. We want to make sure if we're creating this guiding principles document, that the intent of that is shared throughout the plan and is really reflective. So option A, so these are all the same draft text. So in the packet, I gave you a clean version of everything. I gave you a marked-up version that's showing the difference between the first draft and the second draft, and then this is the clean version with graphics. So version A is taking these sort of five themes that we kind of coalesced all the principles around and trying to fit the principles where they best nest within each theme. So this is kind of the simpler take. Obviously, we know that many of these themes or many of these principles could be tied to different themes, but this is sort of the one they were closest to and sort of a simple way of arranging them. The second version is an attempt to kind of show how the principles are interconnected and maybe tied to multiple themes, and this kind of came from, I can go back to, this sort of organization of, well, they're not necessarily in one, they could be in a couple, so kind of capturing that in a more clear way. So that was the sort of second concept that the graphic designer had kind of come up with. And just to reiterate too, we don't necessarily have to say we just like A or just like B, but if there's aspects of the different ones that really stand out that you really like, or maybe there's things that you don't like, or things that aren't in either that you might think could be helpful, we're definitely trying to gather as much feedback as we can so we can go back to the designer and talk about ways to revise. I know one of the goals that the designer had was to integrate the iconography that we already have into the guiding principles document, so you can see, for example, I see like the parks element icon is down there. We have, I think that one's housing up in the corner. So these were kind of the two concepts we've been, we've been working with her on. And then the next steps, once we have a chance to chat through these, is to make sure that any revisions will go into the next version, that will be in the public draft, and that any comments we receive can be communicated through the public comment period process and the EIS process, so those will be part of the record when we do, when and if we do receive comments on that part of the plan. So I wanted to open things up before we get into the schedule to comments on guiding
So do we have any comments on the guiding principles? Commissioner Anders.
On the second one, and then it's here under, it's under climate sustainability, it says we aspire to the city as caretaker. I know what aspire means, but the way that it's used here, it makes it feel like something is missing. I mean, like, do we aspire to be the city or see the city as a caretaker? Something is not quite right with the use of aspire in this sentence. And I just, I'm curious what we're trying to say.
Yeah, I suppose we could instead, again, if we're thinking about these as sort of our end goals and results, we could say, you know, the city is a caretaker rather than aspires to, if we feel like that is more kind of robust way of saying it.
And I'm fine with aspire, it just needs to be, to make sense grammatically. If we're aspiring, if the city aspires to be the caretaker or a caretaker, that's, that's fine, it's just the way that it's written is, is kind of confusing.
This is Jason. I may suggest maybe something to the effect that we aspire to the city serving as caretaker. That might make it more of a complete sentence. I don't know if that helps address it.
Yeah, that's better.
Oh, you're breaking up.
Sorry, could you describe why you're using the word caretaker? And what you want people to understand from the word caretaker? Because it also could be aspire to be the city that cares. That's a whole difference.
If I remember correctly, I think that wording kind of came out of a discussion we had with the working group in terms of trying to think through what the role of the city is with regards to the community, and I think that was maybe where that came from, was city as sort of a way to take care of the people within it.
I think that's what's missing. I couldn't hear what Commissioner Jones was saying, but that notion is, is missing from here. If, if we can just be clear that we hope that the city will be or aspires to be the caretaker of the community or, or something like that, it's just some, something's missing as it's, as it's written.
Is there a preference in the commission in terms of saying that there's an aspiration for the city to be a caretaker, or that we want it, the principle to be more like the city acts as a care, is a caretaker for the community? I would be curious to get a feel for that. Or if there's a preference.
I would say with, with either word, and aspire is not a, a bad verb, it's just the other components of the, of the sentence are missing. So the word aspire is not, is not the problem. It's just making the sentence say what we want it to say. If we want the city aspires to be a caretaker, that's fine, or however we want to say it, it's just not written very, very well.
Commissioner Robson.
Thank you. Strictly from a streamlined perspective, I would eliminate the word aspire. We aspire to all of these things, so I feel like it's a little redundant. I, a little bell goes off for me with the word caretaker. It, forgive me, it echoes nanny state. People can be very resentful of the idea of government serving the role as a caretaker. At the same time, I appreciate what the work group was trying to say, and I, I do believe that Bothell aspires to be all of these things. In that case, it certainly would be better to, that the city serves as a caretaker as opposed to the city is a caretaker, if you want to pick, if we want to keep the word caretaker in there. A city cares for its citizens is maybe a little, is, maybe hits the right note a little more effectively without having some of these maybe more triggering notions behind it. Caretaker can be a little infantilizing, which is something we want to avoid with some of the more progressive changes we are making.
One thought, and, and I'm actually okay with, with aspire here versus some of the others because of just the way that they're written, but if, if we like or want to stick with aspire, we aspire to foster a sense of belonging and blah, blah, blah. I mean, that cuts out all the caretaker stuff, but shows that we may, you know, we may have a ways to go until we achieve this as a goal, but we're certainly working on it.
I like that, that's clean.
And this is Commissioner Jones, I don't know if you can hear me better, I turned my video off, but I just, I, I just wanted to echo what Commissioner Robson said. That's what I was trying to say, is that the word caretaker may not resonate as well with everyone. And, and by using the word caretaker, you may lose the emphasis of what we're really trying to, to get at, so.
Yeah, I think what Commissioner Anders said with just eliminating that and shortening down to we aspire to foster a sense of belonging, well-being, I think it sounds really good.
Fewer words is almost always better. I've got two comments. One is, it seems to me that somewhere it would be good to make reference to the small businesses in the city, and I really didn't see that. And I know there's a little bit of sensitivity on the part of some of those businesses on how they are, how the city feels about them, so I think really being specific about that would be useful. I don't know if it would be in the introductory sentence referring to small businesses also being partners or part of the fostering community, but that's an omission that I'd like to see us think about. And another one is on number eight. Oops, I'm on the first one, where we talk about historically underserved neighborhoods, and I'd like to suggest we substitute the word communities for neighborhoods. Neighborhoods are kind of geographically bound, and communities are, it feels a little broader to me, a little more inclusive, so I'd like to look at that.
I did want to note one quick revision from the transportation team for number four. Rather than saying all modes of transit, they would rather say, I believe it was all modes of transportation. Yeah, so just wanted to call that out, we didn't have a chance to get it into the packet, so.
Yeah, that's good. Other comments on the principles?
In number five, could we change that semicolon to a comma after transit?
Commissioner Anders, go ahead.
I was just going to say on number five, can we change that semicolon to a comma after transit?
Okay. Commissioner Gustafson.
Thank you, Sarah Gustafson here. I really appreciate the clear, concise, and colorful way that these principles were distilled into really, really things that will stick in people's heads. I really enjoy it. I did want to call out item three about the transportation system, and I'm really glad we have Transportation Supervisor Tierney here tonight. When I read the transportation element, I can't get the tragedy out of my head that happened earlier this October with the death of the children due to a traffic accident. And I think this should really permeate every discussion that we have about the transportation element here. I have a suggestion for this element to reference Vision Zero principles. In other words, policies that would put forward a vision for zero traffic deaths, and I'm wondering if right now would be a good time to bring that in.
Definitely, it's coming up. Definitely, it's coming up soon, actually.
We just had a meeting today with our transportation safety team.
Yeah, definitely, but for commission and council, we will be providing very soon an update on our transportation system, safety, and resiliency and other probably.
Will that be at the February 7 meeting?
February 7.
Okay.
That's great.
So it's coming up soon.
Thank you so much. I'm really glad to hear that. I'm not at all surprised that everyone in the city is focusing on this. I would like to suggest some changes to the wording that reflect that the city is being so proactive. I'll go ahead with the, I've, I've cut out a couple things in order to add things in, and it goes like this. Bothell's transportation system provides an efficient, financially sustainable, and resilient network. Our proactive approach to safety ensures zero traffic casualties. And then it goes into Bothell's system balances economic growth and neighborhood livability while preserving the environment. It offers multiple options and equitable service for people of all abilities.
I paused over ensures, I mean, because it's a goal. It's, you know, a very, very important goal right at the top, but I, I just, it just strikes me whether we can ensure that.
This is Commissioner Jones. It, it seems as if this is a good place to put the word aspire as well, right? Because you can aspire to zero.
Yeah. So this is like kind of a vision statement, right, for us? And then you're going to have the goals, policies, actions, and all of that, and we're going to talk about each one of those words literally in, in, in the future in here that you'll be seeing.
Yeah, I'm, Sarah Gustafson here, I like using aspire. I think as long as we can get the zero number in there, because that sticks in people's head, and perhaps pare back some of the other language in order to kind of showcase the safety element.
I'm wondering if for the February 7 meeting, you guys would have a chance to take a look at number three and potentially offer an adjustment, just for them to see a potential version that has some of that language.
An alternative.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much, really appreciate it.
Commissioner Robson.
Thank you, just for clarification. So you talked about, right now, we're just going over the guiding principles rather than going through word by word. Did I hear that? That's what we're work, I thought, I thought you said that just now, but maybe I misunderstood. Are we at the stage now where we can be, where we should be talking about commas and semicolons? Okay, I wasn't sure how deep into the drafting process we were. Okay, with that in mind, in number six, you put the city and city is capitalized, but other places you've said the city with city lowercase, probably just best to make that uniform across the document. Additionally, I have, I was just wondering, how did you come up with the ordering here? What was your thinking? Did you guys think about that, or what was the thinking behind it?
There's necessarily intentional ordering. It probably came out of the way that they're currently ordered, and then as I was, as I was revising them, just sort of fell into that place. That said, if there's a desire to order them in a specific way, we are certainly open to doing that as well. I, I would say number one is kind of intentional, just because that has seemed to be a big driver of the plan this go-around, but for the others, I think if there's a, a way that there's a preferred order, definitely open to that.
If I might directly contradict you, with all love in my heart, I might suggest that we move number two to the top, because it does call to our idea of the role of city government. Climate sustainability, obviously, is a major theme, you're absolutely right, so I would bump it down to number two, but just because that number two does seem to be like our vision as what is the role of a city, I might just suggest bumping that up one.
I guess one, one thing that we want to add is, is our topics that we're talking about, they're not necessarily in order of criteria or an order of.
Of course.
Yeah, I know, I completely understand. Maybe the first one would be the most critical, but like whether it's three or four, or four or three.
Yeah, I, I absolutely understand. If I may just comment, one more thing that is just from my personal perspective, and I really, really appreciate the iconography that's going on. And I really, really appreciate the iconography that's going on, on the right side of the screen there, showing connectivity and economic vitality. That's great to me. I found the highlighted words on the left side of the, on page there of the document a little distracting. And as I was reading the introductory statement, I, or maybe I was just imagining that there were some words in bold in the introductory, and I just found that a little more distracting than I found it beneficial because I didn't have to bounce back and forth between, oh, that's right, that's one of those key words. I, I would love to have that incorporate, that iconography, but the highlighted in text, I just found it a little distracting personally.
Comment I would make on this one, and it's, I'll accept if it's just a personal preference and not general, but that sort of dark background, I mean, when you print it, it just eats a lot of ink, and I'm, these, these are old eyes here. I'm, I'm not sure how well I can read that. The white against the dark background. I do better. And the iconography is great, the layout is great, but just the dark, I mean, when you hit print, and all of a sudden you start sucking all that ink out. Yeah.
This is Commissioner Jones. Did you do a comparison, any sort of comparison between the two layouts with their members of the public, community groups, those types of things, to see what they preferred?
These are pretty hot off the press. So you're kind of the first people seeing them. Uh, but they will be, uh, we could do some kind of an exercise, I think, probably through the website. That would be pretty easy. Uh, we could also bring this to the working group as well.
Yeah, I ask, I'm curious because, so I may disagree with some of the other commissioners here. Because this version, the blue version with the icons, to me, not everyone understands how to use a legend, and then it, it's like almost an extra layer of, okay, you have to use this legend, and I have to remember what this is, and I kind of have to look, and what does this circle mean? I'm not sure how, how everyone's gonna receive that versus the other one where they're sort of grouped by theme, which seems easier to read for some folks, I think. But, but again, I think, I would suggest that you test it out with a, with a few groups. Maybe kids, some seniors, some folks at restaurants, you know, just different types of people.
Yeah, I'll say anecdotally amongst staff, that seemed to be the general response was, we like the symbology, it's cool, but it's a little harder to read. So, yeah, that's pretty consistent.
Other comments? Commissioner Gustafson?
Sarah Gustafson here. I have two more items to suggest. I, I appreciated the reference to small businesses, and I have an idea on how we might include it in option five, if I could go ahead with the wordsmithing. Thriving employment hubs contribute to an economic base that supports small businesses and comprehensive transit, ensuring financial vitality for the city and region. Changing up the words a little so that we can be sure to insert small businesses.
Yeah, I, I do think the small businesses are important for a sense of community, you know, the gathering places. You look at the bookstores, coffee shops, restaurants, you know, people gather there.
This is Commissioner Jones. I, I agree that small businesses need to be in there, but I wouldn't want to change the wording where it minimizes some of these employment hubs that we do have and we are proud of, and we, I mean, we have some really interesting industrial sectors in the city of Bothell, or a biotech sector. We could be one of the strongest biotech sectors in, on the West Coast if we, if we aimed for that. So I, I, I think there needs, I think here again, it's a balance. It's a balance between small businesses and these more industrial employment sectors. And I don't know, I, I don't have good phrasing for that, but I would just ask that there would be a balance.
Is there a general feeling that we like adding some kind of language about small businesses into number five?
Or perhaps hearing Commissioner Jones's concern as a separate item?
Or somewhere in the introductory statement, as you'd suggested. Oh, and Commissioner Andrews has-
Yeah, Commissioner Andrews. Commissioner Andrews, you're muted if you're speaking.
Sorry. I was just gonna say that I like the idea of referencing small businesses in number five, but I also don't want to eliminate the diverse employment and economic base as Commissioner Jones was referencing. I think we can add it, and it's not that many words with keeping, because the small businesses are a part of the diverse employment and economic base, and we don't want to cut out the rest. So that's, that's all I can add.
Commissioner Gustafson?
I like that. I think we need to emphasize diverse employment hubs. The one thing I might ask is if we're saying thriving employment hubs convert to a diverse employment and economic base, we could throw in jobs as one of those words so that we're not repeating employment and get a little more color. But I, I think that all the commissioners' comments on the range of businesses are really well taken. Thank you.
I'm wondering if it can be as simple as thriving employment hubs contribute to diverse job opportunities and an economic base that supports small businesses and the provision and utilization of transit, et cetera, et cetera. Sounds good.
Okay, other comments?
I'm sorry, I missed, uh, small businesses in there. Maybe I just missed it. Can you repeat what you proposed off the cuff there?
Yeah, so I'd heard to not repeat the term employment, so job opportunities, so thriving employment hubs contribute to diverse job opportunities at an economic base that supports small businesses, that the provision and utilization of transit. And I suppose we could change that to and ensures economic vitality for the city and region.
I think we need to work on that one a little bit more because it should promote something other than small businesses. It should promote the other businesses as well. I don't know. I just, I don't have the answer right now, but I, I feel like that was, that it might have excluded some of the other, I don't know. Sorry. I just need to think about that one some more.
Okay.
Commissioner Robson here. If I might suggest us switching this, you guys have done so well on sort of focusing on one central key word for each one of these guiding principles. Although number five does seem a little bit less focused because we taught, we're talking about employment hubs, we're talking about, and then transit, and then the vitality for the city and region. If we just maybe switch into either supporting our economic, a diverse economic base, and, and remove the part about the utilization of transit, which I do feel like muddles the central messaging there, not that it's wrong by any means. But that we talk about, you know, the importance of diverse employment hubs. And I won't be able to wordsmith this in real time. And diverse economic base that supports economic vitality for the city and region. I'm sure we can find a way to put in the word small business there, and it'll be just a little more focused with its point, I guess. I think it, and its, you know, key ideas. And I, so I think, and I think it'll be easier to insert small business, the word small business in there if we focus on sort of a diverse economic base.
Yeah, and I think the reason that the transit note was in there was because that might have been a vestige of the prior statement that we were trying to condense down, and I think the goal of the prior statement was to talk about the hubs, but then also encouraging transit use of employees. But that could be captured, I think, either elsewhere or within the actual goals and policies. You know, we have some language around that too, so.
Well, number three, talking about the transportation system also talks about economic growth. So, yeah, is, is the idea captured there?
So it sounds like there might be some comfort around removing the provision and utilization of transit from number five in lieu of more language around supporting small businesses and/or businesses at a range of scales, some kind of language on there.
And, and that's not to diminish the importance of transit and transportation, but number three is pretty broad and covers a lot of that as well.
So this is Commissioner Jones. I, I support that as long as someone goes back to number three and make sure that it's capturing what I think was intended by that section in number five. And so when I'm looking at the first sentence in number three, safe, efficient, smart, it doesn't necessarily say connected, and I, I think that's what number five was trying to get at, that folks could use alternate, alternative transit to get to employment, get between home and employment, come from outside the region and get to employment hubs. And so I would just want to make sure that that piece was captured in number three, and then I'm okay with that.
Commissioner Robson?
Yeah, just, um, we could even in number three take out the word smart, which is a little bit vague, and just replace it with connected, and it may at least touch upon some of the transit ideas in number five.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Sarah Gustafson here. I agree with all of these changes so far, and I just have one more small request. On the option A, which I really like, there's a, if we could switch to there. On the first one, it says community and cultural strength and resilience. I like the word resilience, but I think we might need to take it out of there so that it has greater strength elsewhere in this page. And I would just say community and cultural strength. It has a really nice, powerful ending to it.
Wondering if other commissioners have thoughts on that?
I, I really like what Commissioner Gustafson said. I'm also not sure if resilience is captured in the two sub-bullets. Whereas, as she said, resilience applies to just about everything there in terms of that ability to, to, to bring it back after some sort of sudden change, right? And so you could think of that, that in terms of climate and environment and economic vitality, any of those things. So I wonder if resilience either comes out, or maybe it goes into the overarching section. But, and, and generally, I just support what, what Commissioner Gustafson said.
Well, and looking down at the, the next one, the climate and environment, the fourth word there is resiliency.
And then, of course, we do cover that in quite a lot of detail in the climate element itself, too. So, I hear that.
Okay, other, Commissioner Robson?
Thank you. I'm really coming around to this format over the blue one. I like, I think of the two, I like this one. I, I like this one. It's lighter. I like it. It's good.
Okay. Other comments? So we gave you a little bit to work with here?
Oh, that's, that's fantastic. All right, so then we're just gonna move right along then to talk about the schedule. This won't be a new slide, except for the orange. We have orange back on this timeline slide. So this quarter, we're working on rise guiding principles, like we talked about this evening. Uh, staff is currently reviewing the preliminary DEIS, so that's sort of the in, inside version of the DEIS. We're getting that all ready to go for the drafts. Uh, we're also gonna be getting draft elements to review, I believe at the end of next week. So we'll be very busily reading and reading and reading to prepare for a release in the spring of the DEIS and the draft plan. Right now, our goal is for an April 17th release for both, and then there will be a 30-day comment period following that. Uh, we're planning on having the open house coincide with that comment period, as I noted before. And ideally, we'd really start, like to start going into public hearings on the draft plan once the comment period is over. And then, of course, depending on how long that process takes, we'll change when council hearings start. We're anticipating sometime in Q3, depending on that. Um, then obviously, there'll be continued review through the public hearing process with the public. Um, and then wrapping up at the end of the year, adopting the plan, and then the technical memo, which is gonna outline regulatory changes we have to adopt next year. I don't know why that slide is also incorrect with 2025. I'm trying to put this in the future. Uh, so it'll be Q4 2024 is what we need to adopt, and then we'll be working on the actual regulation changes in 2025. So that first half of the year. So kind of wanted to just put this out here again. Again, it's not new from December, and just make sure that that feels comfortable with everybody. Then we think that will get us kind of going at a good pace, so.
Okay, comments? I think there's some head nodding, so.
Okay. That sounds good.
I see no objections.
We'll probably be coming back with at least a briefing of some kind, if not just a document, just to remind everyone that April is, because a few months away, but we don't want to, all of a sudden it's April. So, um, you'll be hearing from us at some point before then. I don't know that we necessarily be coming back for a, a full study session of some kind, but it could just be a staff briefing that we hold either with this body or with council. So that was all that I had for this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I think it's a lot of good work encapsulated in this, so we, we appreciate your efforts here.
And then, of course, if there's thoughts that anyone has after the meeting, feel free to email me.
All right, so with that, we'll move on to reports from staff.
I don't think we have anything new at this point, but I will mention live on air that we, unfortunately, our deputy director, Winchell, that we love so dearly, is moving back to Kansas City to be with closer to family now that she has her, her young child. So we are currently out looking for a new deputy director. That posting is live. And we'll be going, Jason, through the end of January, January 31st?
Uh, yeah, right around that. I think it's actually like the first Thursday in February. It's the last day, so close. Um, and, yes. The, we've gone pretty wide with our advertisements, so we're hoping to serve a pretty robust pool of applicants.
Thank you for that. I did want to, in my notes, recognize for the record the deputy director's departure and how good it was to work with her, and I'm sure I speak for the entire commission in wishing her the best as she moves on to other things.
Not that I think we have any, anything else different, so.
Okay.
Anything new?
And reports from members? Members have any comments for the group? Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. I would like to make a report on an item that we did hear a lot about in public comment last year, which was tire dust, tire runoff. And of course, salmon are harmed by the tire runoff. And the news is that three native tribes, Yuruk, Skalam, and Puyallup have petitioned the EPA to establish regulations prohibiting the use of the chemical in question, 6PPDQ, which is what reacts with the air to create the chemical that hurts the salmon. And again, I wish Councilmember Kerd was here to correct this. But the EPA has granted the petition, which means that they're going to start doing research and thinking about rulemaking on 6PPD. rulemaking on 6PPD, because this is the number one thing that can help tire dust, help get rid of tire dust. And the companies want to do it, but pressure to bear on the companies might be the thing that makes it go forward. And then, what we can do here, aside from supporting the petition, is focus on stormwater. That is what citizens can do. So, thank you for that.
Thank you for that update. Other commissioners? Seeing no other comments, I don't believe you have anything to report to council from this. So, with that, I think we've got a short one tonight, and is there a motion to adjourn? Looking around, we keep meeting until we have a motion?
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner, all right, Commissioner Andrews?
I move to adjourn tonight's meeting.
All right, it's been moved. Is there a second? Commissioner Gustafson?
Sarah Gustafson, I second. Thank you.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we adjourn tonight's meeting. All in favor? It is unanimous. There being no further business, then the meeting is adjourned at 6:52 this evening. Our next meeting will be February 7th. Thank you all for your participation, and good night.